I would like to welcome everyone here this evening to this meeting of Newcastle City Council, please be seated. Item one on the agenda is apologies.
Thank you Lord Mayor, we've had apologies from councillors Bartlett, Beecham, Down, Graham, Higgins, Kingsland and Anita Lower.
Thank you. Any more apologies? Item two is minutes, does council agree the minutes of the meeting of the meeting of the council held on the 5th of November 2014? What was that? Yes. Item three is official announcements, I would like to offer a special welcome to the Mayor of the City of Bergen, Judy Dreveland, who is here at council this evening. There will be a carol service in the grand entrance at 5.30 tomorrow, 4th of December, followed by the ceremony to switch on the lights of the Bergen Christmas tree. A very warm welcome to the Mayor of Bergen. On behalf of the council, I would like to welcome members of the youth council to this meeting this evening, I understand that they have had a tour of the civic centre, join city councils at council tea and will stay with us for the first part of the meeting. Congratulations again on your election success. Partners from the voluntary and community sector, Newcastle City Council and the NHS have won the local compact premiership award at the annual compact awards in London. The award was given in recognition of the partnership's work to develop a new blueprint for organisations working together in innovative ways. The partnership is overseen by the voluntary sector liaison group, which consists of six Newcastle councillors and six representatives of the VCS, congratulations go to everyone involved. The death of Nelson Mandela on the 5th of December 2013 prompted communities across the world to pause and reflect on the lessons we can all learn from his mission to create a fairer and more compassionate world. In Newcastle, the city council passed a motion in January this year acknowledging his contribution to peace. To mark the first anniversary of his death, the city council has proposed to present a small number of Lord Mayor's awards this evening. These awards will be given to people who have been nominated by members of our communities for work which they have done to challenge injustice and build good relations where they live, work or volunteer. We have received nine high quality nominations for the special Lord Mayor's Mandela awards. The nominations demonstrate the diversity of the people and projects doing valuable grassroots work in our city. The nine nominations are Fennam Association of Residents, Margaret and Suki from Monchester Road Community Centre, Ali and Evelyn from WERS, Gabby from Eken, Elsie Community First Panel, Peter Sagar from A Living Tradition and Abu Tayeb from IDC EMTEP. In advance of your award and the certificates, I would like to invite the Deputy Leader, councillor McCarthy and councillor Faulkner to say a few words.
Thank you very much Lord Mayor, I'm really pleased that we're launching the city's recognition really for the work of Nelson Mandela, his international contribution. Nelson Mandela was an inspiration to us all, I'm sure, and I think when councillor Faulkner brought the notice of motion about a year ago to city council, we were unanimous in thinking that recognising his contribution to the world was an important thing to do. I think Lord Mayor, your support for this, we're very grateful for the support that you've given, for the work that's gone into this, and you know, in a way we can't replicate what Nelson Mandela did for us internationally, but we can show a little bit of that work in the city and recognise the contribution that ordinary local people make to the, I think fantastic community relations in the main across the city. We don't sit on our laurels because we have to be observant and recognise that at any time there could be problems and issues that we need to address, but we want to recognise and award good practice, so I really welcome this Lord Mayor's award. And I think what's important about this award for us tonight, isn't people kind of self-nominating and saying, "I'm doing really good practice", it's about others recognising the contribution that individuals are making. So I'm really pleased, I want to congratulate them all, I'm not sure that this will be an annual award because I actually think maybe that would undermine a little bit of what we're trying to do, I think we ought to recognise people as we receive nominations rather than do things on its set timescale, and I think we might need to explore how we do that for the future Lord Mayor. But congratulations to all of the people who are here tonight, well done for the hard work and we look forward to many, many more events like this one, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Councillor Faulkner?
Lord Mayor, thank you, I would like to add my appreciation and admiration for this remarkable group of people and the organisations that they represent and the work they do in our city, and I want to thank the council for responding so positively to the motion that we debated and all agreed last January. And I think it's really important work, we've got tremendous tradition of volunteering in the city, but in an area like this, you know, I think people are working exceptionally, in exceptionally difficult circumstances on the front line, we're talking about sadly a rise in conflict and racism and antisemitism, people who are blamed and scapegoating for various groups, Muslims, people who claim benefits, asylum seekers and refugees, and the people in this room and in front of me here work in that really difficult area on the front line, supporting people in communities and making a fantastic contribution. I only have one further thought which I might just direct in the, towards the deputy leader of council, which is that rather than it just being recognition today, I wonder if there might be some opportunity on the International Mandela Day, which is the 18th of May, of July, to perhaps profile the work of these organisations somehow and to encourage other people to come forward and volunteer to help and support them in the work that they do. So thank you and congratulations everyone.
Thank you councillor Faulkner. So in recognition of their work and achievements, I would like to take this opportunity to present them with a certificate for the First Lord Mayor's Mandela Awards here at the full council this evening. This is for the Fennam Association of Residents. Could the gentleman please return, we're going to have a group photograph as soon as we've finished. This is for Margaret Allin. And this is for Susan Bell, I understand Suki Bell is it? Musa Hussain Ali. Evelyn McCapob Nana. Gabi Kotoko. This is for Community First, Elsie Panal. This is for Peter Sagar. And last but not least, Abu Tayab. But missing, we may have to pass the hat around. We'll see you later. Item four is petitions, we have received two petitions on the proposals for Acorn Road and councillor Bricky is going to introduce them, councillor Bricky?
Thank you Lord Mayor, I actually have two petitions with identical wording, the only difference between them is that one of them is from residents, traders and landlords in North Jesmond, the second is from people who do not live in North Jesmond but who use Acorn Road.
Ah, right, okay.
The first one is signed by 774 people, the second is signed by 550 people. And the wording is, "We believe that Newcastle council has failed to consider properly and fairly the proposals for changes to Acorn Road. We are opposed to the option one proposal which has not properly taken into account the very serious impact on traders and residents of changing the road to a one-way system and taking away 10 parking spaces, which is around one-third of the existing parking. We support an amended option two, modified to keep the provision of parking much closer to the existing provision, this is clearly possible. We request that the council immediately review its decision to take account of the views of the overwhelming majority of the landlords and traders who operate on Acorn Road, of the clear majority of residents living in the immediate vicinity and of the many other residents of North Jesmond who are all opposed to option one." Right to present that please.
Thank you councillor Bricky. Does council agree to refer both petitions to the relevant cabinet member and director? Thank you. Item five, your public address by Simon McIntosh entitled "Making Savings". I would now like to invite Simon McIntosh to the lectern to address council on his suggestions for making savings.
Thank you for this opportunity, my address is "Saving Money by Doing the Right Thing", it's rather intimidating facing you all. I'm a concerned council taxpayer living in the Wingrove Ward, I've been there for the last two years, and I want to address the leader and cabinet and all the council about your approach to making savings and to raise with you a radical new way to go about the process, based on a publication by an organisation called Locality, and the publication says "Saving Money by Doing the Right Thing", and I think councillor Ford may have passed copies of that to the leader and deputy leader. And also a book called "The Whitehall Effect" by somebody, Professor John Seddon, so I've got an inquiry, a challenge and a plea for you. My inquiry is about, based on my experience of, as a receiver of council services over the last time I've been living here, most staff have been really helpful, trying to provide a good service, but too often the systems they've been using have actually prevented them from doing that. It's across the board, when I was trying to get my brown bin, take that over, I couldn't, there was a problem, it took a long time to resolve it, get some insulation from Your Homes Newcastle, ages to actually get that sorted out, working with some children's services staff around a community booking of a community centre and also around the central IT systems. When I went into the library and was just trying to meet the constituency MP, each time there were problems and the staff didn't have the power and the ability to actually solve it there and then. And that's really what I want and what everybody wants is to have their problems solved, so my inquiry is, why is this happening? Now, what I put down is next is my challenge, but it's not, I'm not, I'm a council taxpayer, I can't challenge you, so it's really a request because you've got enough challenges yourselves, I know that the council's facing a further, is it 90 million savings or more over the next three-year period on top of the last lot? And the leaders liken the effect to the requirement of falling off a precipice, and I've worked as a senior officer of councils elsewhere for 25 years and I understand exactly what those challenges are, the nature of that, and I've seen what the council's been doing, and there'll be more cuts to services, but what I want to ask you is to consider actually starting in a different place when you're looking at the next round of savings and to actually look at trying to focus on the purpose that services have, not on their cost. And know that by doing, actually trying to sort out the purpose and deal with the purpose, you can actually bring the costs down and push back against the wrong-headed thinking that's been emanating from Whitehall for the last 30-plus years, because this book is a lot about Whitehall and what they've been pushing about economies of scale, saying that will solve your problems, and it doesn't, it actually makes them worse and it makes it more difficult to solve the people's services. So a quick quote because I know I'm coming to the end of my time. "Effective service design means turning current scale assumptions on their head. There is now a solid evidence base to show that services based on individual need, context and views of what people want to live a good life can square the circle. This is to substantially improve the lives of those in need while at the same time draining costs out of the system." That's a quote from this booklet. So my request is, will you consider actually going about this a different way? So, and the plea at the end is, is there a way that you could set up something to actually look at this, possibly joint member officer working groups, to actually look at the purpose of services and ways that this can be delivered which actually will be more effective and deliver what the people of Newcastle want? What I as a council taxpayer and everybody wants is the best services they can get with the money that's available, and that will help the residents a lot more if we actually approach it in this different way. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you Simon, thank you very much. Do we have a response from the relevant cabinet member? Or the leader? Yes?
Thank you Lord Mayor and thank you very much, Mr McIntosh, for your address, I must apologise to members this evening, I hope my voice lasts for at least this item and so I can give a response, I'm sure some of you are cheering secretly at the idea that I might have lost my voice this evening, I'll do my best. Let me start off by saying that we welcome all constructive contributions to the debate around the future of our local services and in particular ways in which we can mitigate against the very devastating disproportionate cuts imposed on us by this current government. Members may have seen some of the headlines in the Autumn Statement today, "We shouldn't be distracted by the pre-election handouts announced by the Chancellor, his track record in turning promises into reality isn't great and his hyperbole always masks the financial facts." Let's make no mistake, it's something that I know we've debated many times in this council chamber, this coalition government has hit local councils harder than any other part of the public sector and has hit hard-pressed cities like Newcastle hardest of all. I need not remind everybody of the facts, but some people may not still be aware that since 2010 this council has had to find savings of £151 million, that's to date, and next year we must find a further £40 million with a further £30 million in the year after that and at least £20 million in the year after that, so an additional £90 million, you're absolutely correct in your analysis. And these cuts will have impact on services. One of the great things about staff in the city council is that they have a very strong commitment to providing good quality public services, and I know that one of the things that motivates staff about working for this organisation is the sense of pride that they take from serving their communities and from seeking to solve people's problems that come forward. And the role of the corporate part of the organisation is to facilitate that, to make it easy for those staff, and I can reassure council that officers across the council are very familiar with systems thinking as one of the innovative ways to safeguard services and ensure that we can continually provide good services to the city and minimise the impact on the most vulnerable in our communities who rely on us most of all. We've dramatically reduced the cost of support and enabling services, for example, by streamlining processes and finding more efficient ways of doing things. We've changed the way that we deliver many local services like libraries and leisure centres by talking to partners and community groups about the greater role that they can play in helping to run them. We've involved our service users to help reshape and remodel the services that they rely on, like our short break care services at what is now known as Bedburn but used to be known as Chief View, that service has been reborn after parents of service users, members where, remember Mrs Mose who came along to talk to us at council, helped to find alternatives to the closure of the previous services. And members will also know, because it's been part of the budget proposals that we discussed in March this year, that as a council we plan to close or have already closed 13 of the 16 bases that the council staff work from across the city as office and administrative bases and are consolidating into just a number of centres including the civic centre. And as part of our commitment to being a cooperative council, we'll continue to involve staff, communities and partners in helping to reshape council services in the face of this continuing challenge presented by authority. Many of these conversations are happening right now, helping us to refine the approach to next year's budget, they're helping to define and develop radical and innovative ways to deliver services differently so we can continue to achieve positive outcomes for the people of the city. And very often, as Mr McIntosh says, this requires us to break free of traditional thinking and to break our ties with buildings and practices that are no longer required or fit for purpose for the future. That's why we have a very clear focus on delivering on outcomes for the city, it's also why part of our lobbying in recent years has been around place-based settlements for public services, because we think that by joining up public services in a place we can achieve actually quite a lot of the savings, and indeed I noticed this report refers to a number of those savings that could be achieved, for example by health and social care working together but also employability services and skill services working more closely together. So there is so much more that we can do and I'm delighted that just last week the transformational panel report which has been provided for the government by, co-chaired by our chief executive here in Newcastle, has published a whole range of recommendations for how public services can be transformed at a local level and efficiencies generated and retained at a local level so they can then be reinvested into improving further outcomes for people in the area. So the only way, Lord Mayor, that the city can hope to respond to the challenges that Mr McIntosh has referred to, but we all feel in this council chamber, is by working together. I'd like to thank Mr McIntosh for coming along to talk to us this evening, and I hope that when we publish our budget proposals in the next few weeks, he and many other citizens across the city will continue to get involved in shaping the future of our public services, which is what in my view the true definition of being a cooperative council is.
Thank you councillor Forbes, thank you. Item six, presentation Newcastle Safeguarding Adults Board Annual Report 2013/2014, McCallan Vera Morris, Chair of Newcastle Safeguarding Children Board, to present the annual report.
Good evening everyone, thank you so much, we are delighted at Newcastle Safeguarding Adults Board to have this opportunity to come and raise awareness of the work of the board this evening. And I would like to start off just by saying that we, all of us in this room, have a vested interest in this important agenda, not only due to the roles we've been entrusted in, but also all of us would wish to feel safe in getting on with our daily lives. Hence the Newcastle Safeguarding Adults Board's vision, which is to ensure that Newcastle is an increasingly safer city for vulnerable adults at risk of abuse and neglect. Newcastle Safeguarding Adults Board works through its multi-agency partnership and with local communities to prevent abuse and neglect from happening, to identify and report abuse and neglect, to respond to any abuse and neglect that is occurring and to support people who've suffered abuse and neglect to recover and to regain where this is possible trust in those around them. Newcastle has a long-established and strong Safeguarding Adults partnership and its level of maturity, developed year on year since 2008, provides an excellent foundation from which we can further develop safeguarding adults priorities in Newcastle. The Safeguarding Adults Board works in close collaboration with other strategic partnerships in the city, including the Safeguarding Children's Board and Safe Newcastle. As you will understand that much of this critical agenda needs a multi-agency As you well understand, that much of this critical agenda needs a multi-agency collaborative and concerted approach to tackle the key issues. These affiliations will continue to be further strengthened, as shared approaches can also ensure that resources are being utilised to their full effect. I'd like to focus this evening on three key areas of achievement in the last year for the board, and also highlight to the council, three key challenges for the board as it goes forward into 2015, 2016. The three key achievements are as follows. First, taking forward the important Making Safeguarding Personal agenda. National guidance in Making Safeguarding Personal encourages local safeguarding boards to ensure that there are systems and processes which are person-centred. And this involves ensuring that vulnerable adults or their representatives are fully involved in the process, that they express the outcomes that they want to happen as a result of the safeguarding process, that they feel safer without compromising other things that are important to them. The board has captured performance data in relation to these areas, and seventy-eight per cent of individuals through the safeguarding process had their desired outcomes either fully or partially met. And ninety per cent of people who had been through the safeguarding process report that they did feel safer without compromising the things that are important to them. The second key achievement relates to work that's been undertaken in relation to early intervention and prevention. And now, the board has a clear escalation policy in place where there are repeated concerns deemed to be of low-level harm. And the trigger for this is four within a six-month period, and this would trigger a review of the individual's situation. This is very much in line with the national agenda in relation to early intervention and prevention, to reduce the potential for serious harm, abuse, and/or neglect. And the third key achievement is the board's function in relation to seeking assurance from partner agencies. One of the key responsibilities of the Safeguarding Adults Board is to ensure the effectiveness of what's done by each partner agency that contributes to safeguarding adults in Newcastle. An assessment event was recently held in November, where each partner agency had to present on their work, achievements, and challenges over the last year. The board did seek assurance at this event and also challenged partners. Already this year, a number of challenges has been taken forward with partner agencies, their self-assessment at the event in November, their recruitment and selection processes following major national inquiries such as Winterbourne, and their training of staff and how they have continued to raise awareness, utilising the 'no excuse, this is abuse' leaflets, posters, and training. Notwithstanding the achievement, there are significant challenges for the board and partner agencies going forward next year, and I'd like to highlight three of those. The first being the recently published CARE Act. Implementing the changes from the CARE Act will have significant implications for the board and partner agencies, which include the content of the CARE Act in relation to a change in the definition of who safeguarding procedures apply to, a change in safeguarding thresholds, which we have currently, the possible inclusion of self-neglect and self-harm categories, the board will become a statutory body like the Safeguarding Children's Board, it will require revision of all existing policies and procedures, and also a revision of the board's training strategy. However, I am pleased to report that the board has already developed an implementation plan in anticipation of the publication of the act, and the implementation plan is on track. The second key challenge, something that the council will be aware of, is sexual exploitation in the city. And the board, working very closely with the Children's Board and Safe Newcastle, is responding to the issues which have arisen from Operation Sanctuary. And some of that work will include developing appropriate resources and joint training going forward. And the third challenge I'd like to report on this evening is that of involvement. And work will be ongoing to further embed the involvement of vulnerable adults in all aspects of safeguarding, including those who are either harder to reach or seldom heard, with an associated continued emphasis on early intervention and prevention. We would look next year for an increase in the numbers of victims, both expressing a desired outcome has been met, and however, also feeling safer following safeguarding processes being concluded. In conclusion, Newcastle Safeguarding Adults Board will continue to respond to these challenges through the commitment of their multi-agency partners, and will continue to place the welfare of Newcastle citizens above organisational or system boundaries. Critically, the board will ensure, with the help and support of the council, that safeguarding adults remains a priority, ensuring effectiveness and accountability for safeguarding at all levels.
Thank you, Vida. And the members may have some questions for you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm absolutely delighted to welcome Vida to council this evening and to welcome the Safeguarding Adults Annual Report as well. And as a local authority, I think, you know, we're only too aware of our duty to prevent abuse and neglect and where that isn't possible, to stop it as quickly as possible. And you talked about the self-assessment event, and I was really pleased that I got the opportunity to attend that self-assessment and to see firsthand the partnership work that happened at that session. And you talk about commitment in the report, and that was absolutely, you could feel that in the room that day, it was a commitment and a desire to work together. I think some of the things that came across from that to me was around the importance of communication and where there were failings, and people identified the failures of communication. I think one aspect was in terms of health, health was saying sometimes there's a health member on a board somewhere, and everybody thinks all of health are represented on that board, and that's not always the case. It depends where they're from in terms of how that can be addressed going forward. One of the, I mean, one of the key things as well was around the problem-solving that was able to happen in that room that day as well, where one of the community and voluntary sector, Rick, there, mentioned not being able to train our staff, you know, to the level that they'd want to, haven't got the resources, and one of the other partners coming along and saying, 'we can help with that', straight away, you know, that happened in that room, straight away. But one of the concerns, and I've spoken to you about this before, Vida, one of the concerns was in relation to probation, and now that we have the two arms of the probation service attending safeguarding, and the issue with around what is essentially a private company now, which is the Bexhill, in that arena, there is a commitment, which is their transparency, openness, sharing of information and communication, that's really crucial to deliver what safeguarding is all about. And it's, my concerns are around how we can ensure, that was that private company coming in, we can still have that openness and transparency and information sharing. You say, you mentioned bringing safeguarding to life, and I think the examples in the report do that, and it is absolutely crucial that every one of us see safeguarding as something that we need to be doing, whatever it is that we do in our roles in the council, or in our roles in the community, or in our roles in our workplaces. Safeguarding is very much something that we all should have committed, been committed to do. So, again, I just say, I'm the honourable councillor, thank you for bringing the report this evening.
Did you have a question now?
Sorry?
Was there a question?
There was a question.
Yes. In terms of probation, you're very right to say that any kind of change to organisations who've been key partners and continue to be key partners means that there's an increased risk. And, excuse me, I think one of the things that we've done as a board is we've recognised that probation now has two arms, and will have two seats at the board, and there'll be two sets of assessment at the assessment events. So, we'll be seeking that assurance from the national part of the probation service and the local rehabilitation unit, and obviously escalating anything where we think there may be an increased risk emerging of the separation of the two arms of the service.
Okay. Right, I have five more members wishing to ask questions. I'll call on councillor Wendy Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm the leader of council, I'm struggling with my voice tonight, so I hope it holds out. Could I firstly thank you for a very interesting and informative report and for all the work that you're doing in this crucial area. Obviously, as you said, sexual exploitation is a major issue this year, and there were one or two comments in the report that I just wanted to perhaps clarify a bit. It says that consideration is being given to whether specialist staff may need to be appointed to respond to concerns, and I wondered where that was progressing, and also that there was a challenge for the lack of existing training resources around sexual exploitation in adults, and again, where you think that would be resolved. And although I realise that everything can be, well, not, everything can be said yet about what's happened with Operation Sanctuary, I just wondered if there were any initial lessons that have been learnt that you're able to take forward. And then, just one other thing, on page thirty and thirty-one, it looked as though the number of alerts was going down, but then it says that this was expected given to changes in the recording system, and I just wondered if you could clarify why that would lead to a perceived reduction. Thanks.
Okay. If I take your first question, it was in relation to specialist staff, and I think for some types of sexual exploitation, there would be staff who already have a reasonably high degree of expertise. And rather than seeking new resources, it might be a case of scoping or mapping where that specialist expertise currently sits, and seeing how partners and the board can access that specialist advice. In terms of training, sexual exploitation training till this point in time has focused historically on children and young people. And we're working very closely with the Children's Board, and again, Safe Newcastle, to try and have training that covers all ages, because we recognise that if you're vulnerable, it doesn't matter if you're nine, nineteen, or forty-nine, then the opportunity to be exploited exists. And I think training going forward needs to cover all ages, because that could happen within a family, and what we shouldn't do is separate off children and young people training from adult training. In terms of an update on the case, there are clearly some areas emerging where we're already beginning some work, and those areas, certainly around training and awareness, as I've said, it's previously focused on children and young people, and we need to promote and raise awareness around what happens with adults. And the other things that have emerged already from Operation Sanctuary is specific areas of vulnerability, and if I could just allude to two of those, one is for adults with learning disability, who, quite a number of those who've been identified as potential victims, which I have to use my words carefully because of the ongoing criminal investigation, have got a learning disability. And these are individuals with a learning disability who are fairly independent in terms of how they function in the community. The second area where it's emerging, where there is a particular vulnerability, is young people who are making that transition into adulthood. So, if you take from about the seventeen, perhaps up to, I would say, as much as twenty-five, because some individuals are more mature than others, and they are a particular group that have emerged through Operation Sanctuary. How that helps the board and partners is where we might target specialist work ongoingly in Newcastle in the future. Yeah? I don't know if I've answered all of your questions.
About the reporting?
Yes. The reporting, the change in reporting doesn't mean that we are doing less work with those that are vulnerable, it's just how you categorise those, and the explanation, we can provide a formal explanation to you after the meeting this evening, if that would be helpful.
Thank you. Councillor Henry Gallagher?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. You may have partially answered my question, actually, in your answer to councillor Taylor. I'm concerned about when vulnerable children become adults. You did speak briefly about sort of the interagency and teams working together, I just wondered if you could give us some more information on that, and are you happy that, you know, any sort of vulnerable children who may be considered to be vulnerable adults will be passed on through the system and will be taken care of?
The board has got what we call a transitions protocol, where there are certain standards required about how those individuals might be supported and managed through that transition period. And what we've been able to do as a result of the emerging learning from Operation Sanctuary is to revise and refresh that protocol to incorporate the learning that's emerging. I think the other way we would address that is through joint training, so you've got the people working with children and young people, experiencing that training, and looking at case examples with the people who are providing adult services, so they're taking part in that collaborative discussion. And I think the other thing is that, as a result, again, of Operation Sanctuary and emerging learning, what we're seeing might be what might be emerging risk factors that would trigger a joint discussion, and some of those would be, you know, sexual promiscuity, for example, that they might be looked after in the system, them being reported missing on a number of occasions. These would all be factors that would trigger a joint case discussion between children and young people services and adult workers.
Thank you. Councillor David Foster?
Good morning, Lord Mayor. Thank you for the report. Three quick questions. The first is about the role of councillors in all of this, because clearly you've got a large board of lots of agencies represented in the report, and clearly you have a communication dialogue with councillor Hobson as portfolio holder, but what about the other seventy-seven of us? Is there something you can say about the role that you see elected members as having in this whole process of safeguarding? And the second question, I took a look at Sunderland Safeguarding Report, and I noticed that for a city that's got the same demographics and virtually the same population, they had only fifty per cent of the alerts that we did, and I wondered why you thought that was. Are they an outlier? Are we an outlier? Is this all also to do with different ways of recording, in which case, you know, I think that should be sorted? And my third question is, I wonder what we should really be looking at? Is it the total number of alerts, to get a feel of the sense of it? Or should it not be the number of alerts that actually result in safeguarding investigations, and what the outcomes of those investigations might be? And if there was some way of presenting that information, we might get a better idea as councillors on the kind of scale of the issues.
In terms of your first point, the role of councillors, I think one of the critical ways that councillors can assist with this important agenda is through sharing intelligence. As you rightly said, you know, you cover between the whole area of the city, and you're working on a daily basis with constituents and communities, and you may pick up issues that would be important to the safeguarding agenda. Types of crime, for example, you know, concerns, complaints about antisocial behaviour, for example, and I think all of that intelligence would feed and inform the safeguarding priorities for the city, so I think that's one important way that you can help. In terms of the other seventy-seven, if you like, I think it's an area in which I know it's really difficult for councillors to be trained in everything, but I think, you know, that if there was an area in which it would be really helpful and useful for carers, councillors, not even, not carers, you may be carers, for councillors to have a higher level of understanding and awareness, it would be about the safeguarding agenda, and that's not adults or children, it's both, it's safeguarding across the life course. In terms of numbers of alerts, Newcastle, for a city of this type and size, is not an outlier, and it could well be that Sunderland is low in numbers of alerts and reporting. I am pleased to see that, you know, the work that's been done through I am pleased to see that, you know, the work that's been done through the board, if you take the last three years, for example, more than eleven thousand frontline staff have been trained, and because of that we'll get high levels of reporting. And that's what we'd wish to encourage, because as I said earlier, we need to get into the early intervention and prevention. And up to this point in time, a lot of that work's needed to focus on serious harm or difficult situations that perhaps could have been avoided had that been an earlier alert. So I think having high numbers of alerts is appropriate. What we need to differentiate between, and I think you make a very good point very well, is about which of those go on to be safeguarding cases where there is harm, abuse or neglect, and which ones are alerts. But recognising what we've said, and it's reinforced in the CARE Act, that we do need to respond to those alerts and do a review to see it might be something small and low level, but that might be an indicator of potential serious harm in the later date. So I think we need to capture both, but perhaps make clearer and more explicit with the narrative in the report, the explanation that gives you those different categories.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Veronica Dunn.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Veda, hello, and thank you for your report and for all the difficult work that you and your team do. Can I just refer you to section 4.5 of the report, which is on page 21, on deprivation of liberty safeguards? You say that the result of the High Court decision was to set a lower level of restrictions, and that this has resulted in considerable resource implications for the council, but with no new burdens money to compensate. Would you agree that the council should carefully monitor the impact of the new burdens and support us in our continuing efforts to secure this much-needed additional funding, both to recognise the additional, the extra work, and also to speed up the process to ensure the best possible outcome? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Yes, and in response to your question, I think you're absolutely right, and I would agree that that situation would require careful monitoring. We know already that in the first months between April and September this year, we had three times the amount of deprivation of liberty requests for assessment than we had in the whole of thirteen fourteen. So we know that's a significant challenge there. I think that we need to continue to work to monitor the situation. However, I am pleased to say that recognising the potential risk associated with the deprivation of liberty agenda, the council did make available some additional resource. I think the question that remains unanswered is whether it's sufficient to ensure that we can respond in a timely manner. And I think that perhaps we're just still very much at the tip of the iceberg in terms of those who will require ongoing assessment. The key criteria are that, you know, they're not free to leave and that they require supervision. And that's a much broader group of individuals than have previously been subject to those safeguards.
Okay. And finally, councillor Marion Talbot.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your report. Just a quick question, on page forty-eight, you say that many disabled people became the victim of disability hate crime. I just wondered, has that increased, to your knowledge? And if so, have you any idea why that might be so?
I couldn't confirm or deny whether that's actually increased, and I would need to check that for you. What I am aware is ongoing, some good ongoing work across the city to keep a very close watching brief on any hate crime that's occurring. The board does have the police as a key partner, and as I've said, we'll work jointly with Safe Newcastle, so we can get good reporting and good communication around when that's occurring, where it's occurring, and what actions need to be taken. I think the work to create places of safety across the city as well, you know, working with shops, local communities, libraries, et cetera, et cetera, where disabled people can feel that they can go to a place of safety should they be concerned or scared, will also be having an impact. I'm not sure, I can't stand here tonight and tell you what that impact is as yet, but certainly I can follow that up for you in writing.
Thank you, Veda. And does council agree to receive the report?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Just on that subject, one of my charities is called Hope for Justice, and they do sterling work rescuing the victims of sexual exploitation. If any of the members would like to have a look at their, on the internet about them, it's well worth it. Okay. Item seven, reports referred from Cabinet, Treasury Management, mid-year review. I understand councillor Dunn will move the report. Do we have a second, eh?
Second, please.
Right, councillor Stevenson.
Yes, just waking up here, just getting it right. This report's referred from Cabinet, as you said, Lord Mayor, and the recommendations are set out in paragraph 2.1 on page seventy-one. There are two recommendations in that paragraph which City Council needs to agree, so I'll formally move those recommendations, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, I call on the second, eh, councillor Stevenson.
Formally set out, Lord Mayor, set out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor David Faulkner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. For the sake of the record, being able to show that City Council didn't just nod this through, just a couple of things, because scrutiny do attempt to grapple with the enormous complexity of this stuff, helped greatly, might I say, by Mark Nicholson, so thank you for that. But I just want to draw council's attention to one or two things. First of all, paragraph 4.4 shows that the overall level of borrowing has increased by ten percent in the first six months of the year, but it does say that it's expected to reduce by the year end. And I just want to say that just to make the two points. One is that it's within the authorised limit, so we shouldn't be bothered by that. But secondly, borrowing is not bad. Sometimes we have quite infantile debates at budget time about how we shouldn't do all this borrowing, because there's interest charges and all the rest of it. But actually, it's one of the things that I think this council can be proud about over the last decade, that it has used prudential borrowing powers to kickstart developments in our city, to invest in educational improvement. And a lot of authorities, particularly in the south of England, actually don't like to have borrowing and therefore don't do any of this, and therefore don't make the investments and don't have the benefits of these investments that we've seen in Newcastle. Having said that, I just want to point out again that it's on, I think it's, I'm not sure which section it is, but the figures show how much of our debt is actually attributable to PFI. It's nearly a quarter of a billion pounds, it's PFI-related debt. And yes, it was largely this, the former administration, our administration, that borrowed most of this to do things like improving our school's estate. And PFI, of course, was the only game in town, and it was the only way in which that money was being made available. But it is a shame that so much of that's gone into the pockets of private sector funders. And my final observation really, and maybe it's one that I just invite councillor Dunn to comment on, what the table on page, on four twelve shows really, is that the much vaunted three-year capital investment programme keeps getting re-profiled. So we don't actually, we didn't deliver much in, as much in year one of it, we didn't, we're not going to deliver as much in year two. So a lot of the, a lot of the three hundred and fifty million that we were talking about or told about is actually getting shunted into year three, and might not even stay in year three, might get shunted beyond that. Well, of course, I know there are reasons for that, but it'd be quite interesting if she told the rest of the members of the council what those reasons were. Thank you.
Councillor Dunn, do I reply?
I will reply to that point, Lord Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, I didn't want to go through the whole report as it was presented to Cabinet, and I think this question was dealt with at Cabinet in any case. But just for the record, I would point out to councillor Faulkner that, yes, the overall level of borrowing by the end of the financial year will be slightly up on the original figure at the start of the year, but it has been acknowledged, it is well within the authorised limit of eight hundred and forty-six million. And the fact is that we are borrowing this money, where we do borrow it, to invest in the future of this city. And that's what this side of the council chamber is absolutely determined to do. And the reason why the figure is well under the authorised level of borrowing is because we are actually trying to make the best use of our internal funds in order to reduce the level of external borrowing and enable us to deliver the very best services and the best investment in this city for the future. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Does council agree with the recommendations? Item eight, questioned by members. We have received one question mark for oral reply, which in a standing order nine A is deemed to have been put. I would like to invite councillor Dunn to reply to the question.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah. It really would have been helpful in asking the question if councillor Stone could have been a bit more specific about the alleged concerns, but not knowing that, I have prepared a response. I am actually really pleased with the progress that we've made in reporting both on financial and performance information to members and to the wider public. The current system of monitoring and reporting progress towards our priorities was put in place following a review by Cabinet members. The council dashboard presents that information clearly, allowing for an open debate about the challenges facing the city and the performance of the council in addressing these challenges. This is a deliberate alternative, Lord Mayor, to previous day-heavy performance reporting, which can obscure the most important aspects of our performance. We've responded to the dismantling of national performance arrangements by the current government to create a reporting system more in tune with our local needs. The dashboards are supported by comprehensive information and data, which is reviewed on a regular basis by officers and reported to Cabinet members at regular portfolio meetings. We report to quarterly, quarterly to Cabinet, as well as to partners through arrangements such as the Safe Newcastle Board and the Wellbeing for Life Board. We place information about the city into the public domain through the New Newcastle website, helping us to operate a comprehensive Newcastle Future Needs Assessment. Our approach has been subject to external validation by our auditors, Deloitte, who regard us as making good progress towards the system at the forefront of local government practice. And in addition, I would add, I made this point at Cabinet, Lord Mayor, that some helpful comments were made by Audit Committee on the nineteenth of September, which the chief executive, assistant chief executive will be actioning. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Councillor Stone, do you have a supplemental?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm surprised councillor Dunn didn't seem to know much about this, given she was there at Cabinet when I raised the question, the concerns then, so probably she wasn't paying attention. Could I ask whether, in the opinion of the administration, the key corporate priorities are being met, and in particular, which areas of council service delivery and performance are giving most cause for concern? Because it is impossible to tell that from the dashboard system.
Councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I now understand that it's councillor Stone's concerns rather than anyone else's that were being referred to. The information that is presented in the performance report does have a number of indicators where clearly the performance in the city, that our performance as a city are poor. For example, on the number of young people who are needs. The key point, and I think this is the important point in this whole debate, is that this council is taking steps to address them, and we will continue to do that.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else? Councillor Wendy Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Would councillor Dunn accept that the dashboard still has items on it that have no date attached and are therefore somewhat meaningless, and also a number of items that are seriously out of date? And I don't think the fact that there isn't any more up-to-date information is really very helpful when the last figure is coming from perhaps two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven. How is that going to be resolved?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah, well, sometimes the best comparator that we can use is actually the UK average. Sometimes it's England, sometimes it's the core cities, sometimes comparable councils. It depends on the particular indicator that we're looking at. And there are well-established benchmarks for some indicators, and we adopt the best one for the particular indicator in question, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Anyone else? We have received six questions marked for written reply. These, together with the responses, have been circulated and displayed in the foyer. Item nine is Cabinet member update, adult services. I call on councillor Hobson to introduce her update report. Councillor Hobson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to be able to bring this report to council tonight, and I'd like to take the opportunity to thank scrutiny for their comments, and also for the work that they've done, especially in relation to autism in order people's housing. It's important that, obviously I've made reference in the report to the disproportionate cuts in funding that we're facing at the moment, and having to deliver a balanced budget for two thousand and sixteen, and kind of setting the context within which this report was written. But regardless to that, I mean, it's absolutely vital that we support the vulnerable people in our city, and it remains a priority. But I think it doesn't help when we're faced with a government whose stock answer at the minute seems to be that every piece of the public sector needs to do their bit, when in reality, I think social care sector needs proper investment to prevent a real crisis that we can all see coming if nothing changes. I'd like to take the opportunity too to thank the social care staff, who do an absolutely fantastic job in ensuring that our most vulnerable are looked after. I've said this, and I'm going to say it again, I do believe that social care, I work in the NHS, but I do believe that social care needs to be lifted out of the shadow of the NHS, and it needs to have proper parity with the NHS. But this government seems to be content with eroding the NHS instead of looking how to make social care funding better. The Better Care Fund and the CARE Act that we've heard spoke about tonight by Veda, the elements of that I absolutely agree with are the way forward in terms of prevention, early intervention and integration of services, but without the proper resources, I think it is absolutely an missed opportunity and provides an even greater challenge for us. I've also made reference to the devolution debate and the potential for devolving an integrated health and social care budget alongside truly redesigning care around the individual as a way forward. And I've mentioned, people might be wondering why, I've mentioned flu jabs in the report as well, but as a nurse who works in critical care, I understand the preventative nature of that flu jab and what that can mean for the individual, for a family, but also for the services that are provided. So to prevent somebody going into hospital needing high dependency treatment, what that means to that person, if we can prevent that by just delivering a flu jab to the person or to the staff who provide the care to them, to them people, the personal benefit to the person, the individual, the family, is the most important one, and that has that added consequence of the financial gain too, in the prevention. And that's just one example. Obviously, the fall strategy that we have is another example of that. And I think also, I'd like to highlight the twenty-six thousand five hundred carers we have in the city as well, and the vital role that they play. I'm particularly interested in the health and wellbeing of those carers, because I know from personal experience that those carers don't put themselves first, they put the people that they care for first, and they are more likely to suffer from anxiety and depression as well. and depression, as well as other physical illnesses such as musculoskeletal problems. And I was pleased to attend the Carers' Day event last Friday in Granger Market, to see our partners there, Your Homes Newcastle, the Fire and Rescue Service, alongside the Mental Health Trust, all there to support carers. And there were actually on the day people being referred into the service who were looking for help. Also, I think it's crucial that we highlight mental health as well, and we talk about parity of esteem in terms of mental health, and we need to ensure that mental health doesn't get forgotten about when we talk about the integration agenda too. And I've mentioned that I'm a dementia friend now, and I would urge other councillors who haven't yet taken up that challenge to become a dementia friend. And I'm looking forward to having some conversations in the next few weeks about how we can work towards making Newcastle a dementia-friendly city. And Councilor Dunn mentioned the Winterbourne scandal and the implications that that's brought to us. And I hope that the report highlights the timescales that we've been asked to adhere to, and the new time scale that we've got, that these people need to be assessed by the 31st of December, which is just not realistic, absolutely not realistic. And it's right and proper that these people do get, they deserve to have a full assessment. And I think the way that we're dealing with it is the right way forward to make sure that those people get the assessment that they deserve and get placed in accommodation, that's the right accommodation for them. In some cases, that is mandatory accommodation, and we'll be willing to do that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Linda Hobson. Members may have some questions. Will you? Councilor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a few questions. Firstly, on the work being done with carers, I very much welcome the sessions that took place across the city, getting the views of carers. I just wondered if you could say something about the main issues that have come out from that consultation and what the council's doing about them. Secondly, on the Winterbourne problems, I fully understand the difficulties in getting people out of hospital. What I was particularly concerned about is the information that suggests that more people are actually going into hospital rather than straight into community care. And I just wondered why that would be happening, and obviously it seems a particular priority to prevent there being more people needing to move out. Some who are already established may have particular problems of leaving hospital, but it seems a huge shame if extra people are being admitted at this stage. And also, thank you for putting in the bit I asked you about from scrutiny on isolation. I fully understand the chain reaction project's going very well, but obviously it's a limited number of people that can help. And I just wondered if there are any other projects that are helping on this issue.
Thank you. Councilor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very pleased that you put the King's Fund Commission report, or the findings of it and conclusions, into this report, because I think most of us agree now that moving towards this single budget, ring-fenced budget for NHS and social care, with a single commissioner operating locally is the way forward. It's taken a long time to get towards that way of thinking, and your report points out how difficult it is going to be to get there, given the way that the services, the funding still kind of concentrates, is concentrated more on urgent care treatment, hospital treatment. But I have to say, for all the imperfections of the restructuring that took place at the beginning of this parliament, I do think that what we've got is better than what we had, because in this city, we had nothing short of open warfare between the former primary care trusts and the hospital trusts, and we had the patch list of interface with social care. And I think we've now got a much greater consensus and capability of working together to get some of these integrated pathways and outcomes. However, having said that, and having, as I would do, pay tribute to much of what we do and that is recorded in your report, I've brought slightly at the line that you had at the bottom of page 87, where you said long-term sustainability is the biggest issue, and it demands acknowledgement from opposition and independent councils. But it's not as if this is something that we've just learnt in the last three or four years. Under the 13 years of the previous government, there were at least two major reports and recommendations about restructuring and improving the funding of adult care, the biggest one being the Oneless Report, and they were both almost totally ignored. And at least under this government, there's some movement in the direction of reform and restructuring on funding. There's certainly been the change to make public health the responsibility of the councils again, and then the first steps really, serious steps into integration of social care and health services. So I just ask you, I will note and agree that long-term sustainability is the problem, but I'd ask you also to note that it isn't a political football, that actually this has been an issue that this country's refused to tackle for at least the last 20 or 30 years.
Thank you. And Councilor Stone? Did you have a question?
No, I was asked most of my question there for me.
Right, that's fine. Councilor Hobson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry, Wendy, I think I think I've got to go first, touch on the carers. About the carers in relation to what's coming up.
What's been really forward that we need so far that we look at?
Yeah, I think I mentioned in my response specifically around the health of our living for carers, but also how we can help carers to not reach critical, this critical stage of what preventative work we can do with carers to that, so that they don't get to the stage where it becomes an absolute critical emergency that we're not coping, and how we can stop that from happening. Also, the issues around transition through the service from, there was one in particular, a young woman who transitioned from being a young carer to then having, for a man, trying to get into employment. And I know I had a meeting with Joanne Singh around how we can manage that aspect, and what more we can do around that. But the full detail of the report is throughout, the next part of the report is throughout that, yeah. Around Winterbourne, I think we were set unrealistic targets. I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. I think we were set absolutely unrealistic targets with no additional resources to help implement, in terms of what was necessary. And so therefore, I think trying to deal with what we've got, and the people coming in as well, is that we haven't always got the right accommodation to put those people into. And they deserve, they absolutely do deserve, we put into the accommodation that's right for them, and that assessment, and we're taking kind of a backlog with what we've got. And we talked exquisitely around how we would be able to do some of the more preventative stuff that is in that review as well, and trying to just deal with what we've got at the moment. And I'm absolutely concerned that the numbers are perceived to be increasing, they are increasing, and what we can do about that and stop that from happening. You're absolutely right. And the isolation, the social isolation we talked about, and I feel impressed to find out what awards are being given with the health and wellbeing funds, and how this social isolation may be able to be something that could be funded through that pool of money for local, to target the local area. But it's looking at what is out there, I think we need to see what is out there. There are a lot of things out there, there's not, some people don't know how to access all services that are out there. In terms of the King's, you reference the King's Fund and the ANA Fund, and I absolutely agree that, it seems to be that, I mean, there's no getting away with the fact that there's a general election coming up, and this government are absolutely terrified that an NHS trust is going to go bankrupt before the general election. And they are using it to fund the critical care, the acute part of the NHS, to shore up ANA services, to prevent that from happening, to try and make it look like we're not having this massive backlog of ambulance, ambulances lining up at ANA, that we're not being able to get people discharged from hospitals, and we go back to the bed-blocking era. It is happening now, it is happening there. But that's money that's being taken out of the social care pot, so social care is suffering yet again. The Better Care Fund is, as I said, it's the right way to go, but it's not the panacea. Integration is not the, it's not the panacea for the financial difficulties that we are all, and it needs to be addressed. The people who are most vulnerable in our communities cannot continue to have a service that's underfunded, a workforce that's underfunded. I've made reference in there to working with Unison on how we can look to implement the Ethical Care Charter, because these people, whether it's people who are relying on the services in the community, and whether it's the people who are delivering those services, absolutely deserve better than what's available there. I'm absolutely delighted that we don't deliver 15 minutes of care in this authority. I'm absolutely delighted that we don't have people who are working directly for us, who are on zero hour contracts. But, you know, in some respects, that's not good enough, and that we need to look to see how we can do better in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Hobson. Well done. Does Council agree to receive the report? We now have a further Cabinet Member Update, which was circulated as a separate additional item for the agenda. Cabinet Member Update Communities, I call on Councilor Stevenson to introduce her update report. Councilor Stevenson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I thank Council for receiving this report this evening? And just note for your information that you should have received a draft copy of the report that I took to scrutiny and the comments raised by scrutiny to myself and to deputy members. This obviously is in draft form, because it needs to be ratified by the scrutiny panel, but that circulated this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In introducing my report, I would just like, first of all, to give thanks to both my colleagues, Deputy Cabinet Members Stockdale and White, for the work they've conducted throughout this period of time within the Directorate and their particular portfolios. And in addition, I would also like to thank the many and varied officers and Director of Communities for all the work they've done in relation to the changes and the restructuring of the Directorate. As you'll see from the report, it is a very diverse and very wide Directorate, covering a number of front-facing services of this council, and it's no mean feat that goes on within the Directorate, I have to say. So I'd like to place on record my own thanks to them and my deputies' thanks. One of the things that I would like to point out is in relation to the forthcoming key achievements from the last 12 months. These are an example of some, and we did go through, and I'm very thankful for scrutiny. I personally thought scrutiny was a very, very well-informed committee in the sense that the report and the questions that they asked, as you'll see in the draft, were very enlightening. I hope I gave very detailed, and the officers supported the detail that was given to the answers, so that people got the relevant information put forward. And I'd like to thank members of that committee for that. In addition to that, I would also like to point out that some of the issues that were raised from scrutiny, members should already have copies of some of the information that was requested to be circulated to members. And I would like to just place on record, as I did in the committee, that there is certainly an intent for things to be brought to scrutiny. I know Councilor Faulkner did ask some questions in relation to certain aspects of policy change and discussions we're having around refreshing policies. That would be helpful, being brought back to scrutiny. And certainly, I have no problems with doing that, because I think scrutiny is invaluable in shaping the way forward of any changes that are made. So that will certainly be happening. So with that, I take any questions or comments. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Stevenson. I call on Councilor Kane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank Councilor Stevenson for bringing this report to council. It's got a huge amount of detail, but I felt there was a number of serious elephants in the room that didn't seem to get much, if any, notice, mention, I should say. The first one is decent neighbourhood standards. Now, a couple of years ago, we heard nothing out of the ruling group, except for how wonderful decent neighbourhood standards could be, that they were going to revolutionise local services and completely change the way the council interacted with communities. And yet, when they were actually implemented, we got some results through. All it seemed to consist of was a page containing such pearls wisdom, and I quote, "The ward has greater need, although this has reduced," which frankly, it might as well say, the answer is 42. I actually asked for that to be translated into English for the benefit of our residents, but I was told, no, that's the corporate format. In the report, the only mention of decent neighbourhood standards is in passing in reference to a project running in Biker that I think arose from the consultation. There's no other mention of this, you know, pillar of the local working and neighbourhoods that the administration promised. So I'd like, I'd be very grateful if Councilor Stevenson could elucidate on that. The second one, which surprised me even more, was there's very little mention of cooperative communities, apart from listing cooperative communities near the start. And again, we got years of hyperbole, and this was going to be a revolution, and there's a network of councils all doing cooperative council working. And I've always asked the question, when's it going to get to the front end? Because a resident of Ouzbourn Ward got up one Sunday morning, off her own bat, went, filled a couple of rubbish sacks full of litter that were in the green spaces up and down her street, called in Varical and said, "I've done this, can somebody come and pick up the litter?" And she was told she would have to pay a bulky rubbish charge. Now, that's just one anecdote, but I actually asked, I followed up for and asked the officers, what is the process? What should this resident have done? And they said, "There is no process." So she was trying to do exactly what a resident should do under the cooperative communities model, and she got a slap in the face. So again, I'd be very grateful for Councilor Stevenson's view on how that should work. The last one, as we go orange, is there's nothing in here, and it might be a timing thing, Councilor Stevenson could correct me if I'm wrong, but we got two petitions in the October meeting from both East and West End about the mess in the back lanes. There's nothing specific in that. In particular, I'd like a little bit of clarity, because Councilor Stevenson replied to a letter I wrote her about this, saying that signs in the back lane wouldn't work. And then, almost as I received that, I also got a copy of my favourite piece of fantasy fiction, Ouzbourn Labour Voice, which said, "Labour will also launch a new campaign in the new year with targeted messages and visuals in particular neighbourhoods where street cleanliness is an issue." So I'd be very grateful to know whether we are going to get the signs in the back lanes that we asked for. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Dunn?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just wondered if the Cabinet Member is able to inform Council if there are any further developments to report on the take-up of school meals? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Stevenson? Unless you have any more questions?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. With relation to decent neighbourhood standards, I think there was a recent question to council which indicated that there would be information being brought forward. Decent neighbourhood standards updates have been being looked at for some time now through all the wards, and we are looking to produce information as per ward to ward members fairly soon. There is work ongoing to bring them together, it has taken a while to collate the updated information, as it stands at the moment. The process that it will take will be working with ward members to actually give them information in relation to what's in there, because clearly, looking at figures doesn't always give the background information as to how they've been accounted for. Some things may have been improved, some things may have not been improved, but there may be valid and relevant reasons to that.
may be valid and relevant reasons to that particular ward, why these circumstances have happened or not, as the case may be. The intention would always be to also put the information on the website, but I personally thought it was better that ward councillors had discussions around this prior to that happening, because they will need to be responsible for asking, for answering any questions that any relevant resident goes into for that ward in relation to any of the outcomes, should they care to do so. So that's in relation to decent neighbourhood standards. In relation to our cooperative communities, there is a number of things, and I have mentioned this at a number of councils, in relation to questions on what's happening in cooperative communities. There is an awful lot of work going on in individual wards in relation to working with residents and working with groups. It's an unfortunate situation that this has been highlighted about, the individual who has collected a number of black sacks. However, bulky rubbish just has one standard in relation to payment for a number of black sacks. Surely there should have been some collation with either the communities team or someone to state this was happening, as this is over and above clearly what we would expect. But we are delighted that residents are actually listening to us and taking on board the role that I know a lot of children are doing in schools. I'm actually going to see some schools that children have been participating in, helping and learning about the dangers of rubbish tomorrow. So therefore, it's timely that this should be brought about with leaves and other things in, in back lanes and in streets and parks, and everyone is encumbered on to take responsibility. And I'm delighted that that's happening. But I will look into the point that councillor Kane has raised, because clearly, where people are working with us to support us, we need to support them as well. Finally, in relation to petitions, petitions regarding behavioural change, petitions regarding other things would be done on a general basis, not necessarily waiting for a yearly report to council. Working back lanes in relation to communal bins and other things, as you know, have been rolled out in some areas, there is still ongoing discussion with ward members and residents on what happens in other areas. With regard to signs, signs may work in one area but may not work in another. And that was highlighted to councillor Kane in a recent correspondence, that where signs had previously been used in one area, they had indeed not worked. Behavioural change will be being rolled out across the city, and it will be in a format where there will be posters and other things in light, not just signs within specific areas. So we will be re-looking at all of these things, specific to areas as individual areas, because they are very much bespoke to the problems that they incur. So that's, that's in relation to those. With regards to free school meals, councillor Dunn, there was a discussion at scrutiny in relation to this, and things are changing all the time. School meals are now being delivered and have been increased across a number of schools. The universal infant free school meal take-up, as of the end of November, is around ninety percent, which is three thousand and three hundred additional meals being delivered in this city on a daily basis. Currently, I would just for information, let you know, Lord Mayor, we have on order six hundred and forty turkeys ordered for school dinners. I'm sure none of them voted for this, but there you go. And a lot of the school meals menus have been, work's been done on school menus to support the work that's been done through the services in the individual schools. In addition to this, we have also recruited an additional ninety school meals catering staff, a lot of them from the local communities. And I think, you know, that just shows there is a lot to do, there's a lot more work to do as we move forward. But certainly, the work that's been done across all sectors in relation to preparing and getting the kitchens ready at very short notice by CityBuild for the schools to actually implement this for the children, has been something that I think Newcastle should be very proud of. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stevenson. Thank you very much.
Is it in order for the city council's Twitter feed to be tweeting the answers to the cabinet members' questions before she actually answers them in this chamber?
I'm sorry? Give me that question again, councillor Stone.
Is it in order for the council's press office to be tweeting the answers to the cabinet members' questions before she actually answers them in the chamber?
Never know the good man.
Okay, the answer from our legal gentleman is that there's no provision to stop that. Incidentally, when we're talking about rubbish and collecting rubbish, councillor Kane, I mean, you might be interested, I spoke to John Lee, CEO of Y H N, and I have agreement with him, I collect rubbish in, I put it in the back with the Y H N officers. Of course, logistically, I don't know where your Y H N office is, but is a possibility to explore that with John Lee and Y H N. It may help. Okay, here we go. Does councillor agree to receive the report? Item ten appointments, are the appointments agreed as set out? Item eleven, notice of motion, food banks. I would call on councillor Kilgaw to move the motion, seconded by councillor Riley. Oh, sorry, Jackie Slesinger, you're seconding it? Ah, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As you can see from the motion to council, the numbers of people using food banks nationally have increased threefold in the last year to over nine hundred thousand people, from less than three hundred and fifty thousand during the previous year. A recent independent study has shown that nationally, almost half of food bank users are referred to food banks due to benefit sanctions, delays in paying benefits, or because they've been hit by the bedroom tax or removal of working tax credits. However, a growing number of clients, almost twenty-five percent, are referred due to low income. Food prices have risen by forty-three percent in the last eight years, housing and energy costs have increased also, while wages for the lowest paid have at best stagnated. So for some in low-paid or part-time work or employed on zero-hour contracts, all it takes is for one relatively small change in circumstances, such as a period of illness, a bereavement, or an unexpected bill, to tip them into financial crisis. The situation in Newcastle certainly echoes the findings of this study. The West End Food Bank, where councillor Riley and I volunteer, is currently the largest food bank in the country, helping over three and a half thousand people a month, a number which is continuing to grow month on month. At least half of those help to children. Just take a moment there, that's one food bank in Newcastle helping over three and a half thousand people a month. We have seven food banks in the city. These are shameful statistics, colleagues. However, this figure may well be only the tip of the iceberg. As I say, there are currently seven food banks operating across Newcastle, but an NCVS study found anecdotal evidence to suggest that there are a number of unofficial, small-scale food banks operating in the city, serving perhaps a couple of streets at a time. We know also the places like the People's Kitchen and Changing Lives, formerly the Cyrenians, and many places of worship across our city offer free food to the hungry and the desperate. I'm only able to help out for a couple of hours a week, and I find it humbling to see the time and the care that many other volunteers give to helping the most vulnerable in our society. Not only in providing food for those who might otherwise go without, but also in taking time to talk to clients, to understand them, and to refer them to other agencies, to help them back onto their feet, and to hopefully prevent further crises occurring. Colleagues, it is shocking that as one of the richest nations on this planet, we are in a position where some of our residents are reliant on food banks to feed their children. Where the north-south divide is even played out in food bank donations, with food banks in the south donating their surplus goods to a food bank in Newcastle. And where ideologically driven, changes to the welfare system result in citizens of our city needing charity in order to eat. So what can we do to help? Well, individually, I would urge you all, if you're able, to support your nearest food bank. This can be by giving your time to help out at one of their sessions, by giving a financial donation, or by donating food. The Trussell Trust website gives a list of suitable foodstuffs if you're unsure about what would be best. And as it's a festive season, perhaps you could consider donating an extra treat, a small box of chocolate perhaps, or something suitable for children. Collectively, as the motion suggests, we can help support the food bank's Christmas appeal by publicising it to our residents and employees at meetings and through our website, publications, and internal communications. Finally, we as a council can write to the appropriate government ministers to express our utter dismay at the rising number of residents forced to use food banks in order to feed themselves and their families, and request an urgent review of this coalition government's welfare and employment-related policies that have forced many into this position. I move the motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Jackie Slesinger.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I declare an interest here and now that I became, that I actually became a trustee of the West End Food Bank a few months ago, and so I feel qualified to speak in this, on this motion and in the debate tonight. The motion states that the food banks in Newcastle are creating links with food banks in wealthier areas of the country. In fact, it is only the West End Food Bank which is actually doing this. There are considerable transport costs, but it is financially very economical. But nevertheless, cash donations are vital in meeting this and other operating expenses involved in running a food bank with such a massive ongoing demand. May I make a plea to the local councillors to support the management of the food bank in applying for ward funding as soon as possible to meet the urgent need for financial assistance? They have been so busy recently, and your help would be very much appreciated. I accept that there is a problem with the recent benefit sanctions, which leave some vulnerable people without any funds for certain periods of time. But no one can deny that the benefit system was in need of overhaul. It was complicated, cumbersome, unsustainable, and open to abuse. I've sat on the Social Security Appeals Tribunal for many years and witnessed at first hand the difficulties in applying a complex body of law, running to six volumes, to what in essence were straightforward issues. Food banks are providing a vital and welcoming lifeline to many of our citizens, but I am concerned that it will become a readily acceptable part of established formal provision, and society cannot rely on charity foods to fix the holes in the welfare state. There needs to be a review of the sanction policy. This policy is confusing and intimidating. It should be less punitive, and there must be a speedier process of benefit claims. The government's imposed target is sixteen days. That is too long for vulnerable people, and some wait even longer. As a councillor and trustee, I was able to persuade officers of the urgent need for additional premises, and we are very grateful to the council speedily offering the food bank the Old Lilyer Youth Centre. This will greatly facilitate the provision of further specialist advice from other agencies. Apart from the provision of food, this will be an enormous help in turning vulnerable lives around, giving back confidence, restoring human dignity, self-respect, and independence. The food bank is not just to feed people, but to make them feel that there is hope. I'm very pleased to note that Frank Field is chairing an all-party parliamentary group into Hunger and Poverty, which is expected to report back before Christmas. Hunger and poverty have been with us for many, many years, but resolution of these significant issues is something that we would all welcome. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Riley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just first of all like to say a big thank you to councillor Kilgaw for bringing this motion to council. It's a very important issue, and she's right to raise it. The fact that in the twenty-first century, up to a million people in this country are relying on food banks is shocking. The fact that at just one food bank in Newcastle, we have up to a thousand people a week relying on a food bank, half of which are children, is a disgrace. And the fact that because of this coalition government, we, it's getting worse, is as far as I'm concerned scandalous. Now, I appreciate the fact that the party opposite have decided to support this motion, but I do think that they have to accept some responsibility for this situation. We cannot hide the fact that eight out of ten food banks say that it is benefit sanctions and benefit changes and benefit delays which are the main reasons for you being forced to use food banks. And it is the, it's the policies of the party opposite as part of the coalition government that's making this happen. We cannot forget that it is the party opposite that has imposed disproportionate cuts to the North East, which hits vulnerable people and puts people in a position that they have to use food banks. It is the party opposite that has presided over a real wage reduction, which means that people are on low wages, having to go to food banks. Now, everywhere I go, as a councillor serving the good people of Blakelaw in Newcastle, people, there's more and more people coming to me who have been hit by benefit changes and are having to rely on food banks. There's more and more experiences being shared with me. Now, as councillor Kilgaw already mentioned, we help out at a local food bank, and I'm always amazed at the fantastic things that go on there. Whether we are filling crates, lifting crates, filling plastic bags, or speaking to the people that use the food banks, I'm always amazed at the sense of camaraderie and purpose that we have, and it makes it fun, but also sometimes deeply moving. Now, I would urge anyone, obviously, to support the food banks any way that they can, and in particular, support the Christmas appeal that's being mentioned in this motion. Now, as a councillor, I have to say that I am proud to be part of a Labour-led council which is implementing the living wage, which is supporting the lowest paid. I'm proud to be part of a Labour-led council which is committed to ending the dreaded bedroom tax, which is always, which is often mentioned to me as a reason why people use food banks. I'm proud to be part of a Labour-led council that believes in a fairness agenda, which simply believes that those who need more should get more. Now, I just want to finish by sharing a conversation I had on my first day at the food bank. I was working with Rizwan, a young nineteen-year-old lad who helps at the food bank. And we were filling the crates, and I said to him, "Look, isn't it great that Newcastle has the biggest food bank in the city? How caring we are." And Rizwan just retorted and said, "Ben, this is nothing for us to be, this is nothing to be proud of." That was as simple and poignant a response as I needed to be, to be, to be made aware of the reality of this awful situation, and I support this motion.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Faulkner.
Well, thank you, Lord Mayor. When we saw this motion from councillor Kilgaw, which is sensitive, compassionate, extremely reasonable, and makes some good points, including some points that are critical about the benefit system, one that, in its fundamental underlying structure, is something we inherited from the previous government, as you all well know. But nonetheless, we all wanted to support this motion, but we did fear that it would be used as a bit of a platform for the attack dogs to come out and have a bash. And there we are, it's started already. I just want to say a few things to you. First of all, did you know that food banks start in the States forty years ago, that they've been going in Italy and France for thirty years, that prosperous countries like Germany and Canada have got food banks? If it's a shame here, it's a shame there. What you don't seem to understand is that the real issue is about how increasingly prosperous societies are becoming more and more unequal. And it's not just in the UK. It is not just in the UK. So please don't just make this an attack on one government at one point in time that had a huge problem of debt to tackle, which you left behind. So listen, Ben, you introduced this political element, so don't balk if you get some of it back. And it is true that food banks, even in Belgium, the proportion of people who are using food banks has increased because austerity kicks in wherever austerity kicks in, and it hits societies that we would regard as prosperous as well. Now, there's a whole host of other things that sit underneath this. Think about the food waste. Something like five billion pounds' worth of food waste in this country every year. Think about the profiteering by the supermarkets. There's all sorts of issues that underlie, not just an issue about benefit and benefit levels and sanctions. But I do fully agree, and councillor Slesinger said so, but you obviously weren't really interested in hearing it, that the whole system of sanctions, the whole system of the way in which benefits are structured and paid needs to be, needs to be reformed and revitalised. So I just appeal to you, you know, you're looking for, I hope you're looking for, maybe you weren't looking for, a cross-council endorsement, maybe you hope we might speak against it and vote against it. Maybe that's how bad it is in your minds about wanting to be anti-government. But actually, we support the motion, notwithstanding what you said and what was, notwithstanding the other prepared speeches that some of you might have, ready to deliver now. the other prepared speeches that some of you might have, ready to deliver now.
Thank you. Councillor Jackie Robinson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I support this motion. I think that it is shocking that, being one of the richest countries in the world, that so many are going hungry and have to rely on food banks. This is 2014, not 1814. It is especially abhorrent that people are worrying where their next meal is coming from, even more so this time of year. The coalition government should hang their heads and shame that so many food banks are sprouting up all over the country, yet they refuse to acknowledge that they are responsible. Millions have been wasted on software for universal credit, which is still not working effectively. It is obvious the changes to the benefit system will have adverse effect on the most vulnerable, as more and more people are working zero-hour contracts, totally at the mercy of unscrupulous employers. It is back to the dark age of queuing outside the factory gate, hoping to get picked out for a full day's work in order to put a meal on the table. This exploitation has to stop. We are the party to bring this to an end. People on minimum wages are working extra hours to get a decent living, as working tax credit rules have changed. Many hard-working people since this government have been in control have found themselves unemployed through no fault of their own. These changes are demoralising to people and, in effect, are causing mental health issues in both adults and children. I was really shocked last week that a morning programme and a host of celebrities and a supermarket working together to get people to donate food to the food banks. This should not be happening in this day and age. Even more shocking was that a charity that normally advertised for helping African countries for starving children were asking for donations for their children in the United Kingdom. Just last week, I was informed that a family of four who live in our ward have thirty pounds per week to buy food and pay amenities. That was all that was left after paying rent and their council tax. Through no fault of their own, they could not get to the food bank at the allotted times, so had to go without. The question is, how many other families are in the same position? The coalition government think that putting up the threshold for tax for the lower paid is a great help, but they conveniently choose to forget that they have given million years a tax break, and bankers are still receiving big bonuses. I have to say this to the coalition government, have a lot to answer for, and shame on the Lib Dems for getting to bed with the Conservatives and voting with them for all these damaging changes, which are having a devastating and negative impact on our region. Members of any of these cities, please support this motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. And may I firstly congratulate you on your maiden speech. Thank you. Councillor David Wood.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry about that. Lord Mayor, you just start experiencing advancing ages. You're allowed to reminisce, but even if you're not allowed, you're going to do it anyway, so here we go. And just to think of councillor David Faulkner, it's not a prepared speech, it's something that I've been thinking about ever since we got the papers, because I was really pleased to see councillor Karen Kilgower bring this motion. When I first came on the council, I was very fortunate to forge a friendship with councillor Peter Lane, councillor Kilgower's father, who was able to assist me and guide me, and I hope she experiences the same from someone else in here. But when you start reminiscing then, in the eighties, food banks were springing up all over the place as a direct result of political policies. The mining communities, the disgraceful behaviour of the Thatcher government then, with food banks there, and I recall the European Common Market, as it was commonly known then, with the butter mangers, there were queues and queues of people in Walker and elsewhere in this city, queuing for butter, you know? And you see, and then, from then, it's gone on and gone on. They say nothing changes. Certainly, when I think about the only thing that's certain in this world is that Newcastle United will never win a competition. When I think back to the policies of the different political governments, but certainly what's going now, I just get the point that people don't choose to go to food banks because, "Oh, let's get some free food." Most people will go to food banks because there is nowhere else to go. Though I just find that now, there is not much change in the world. But the one thing that is changed in this one with the food banks now, a lot of those have been set up as a direct result of policies that have been implemented by another Tory government, but sadly, it's been propped up by the Liberal Democrats on this one.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Councillor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I won't echo the sentiments from my colleagues on this side of the council chamber. Lord Mayor, can we congratulate councillor Kilgower on her maiden speech too?
Oh, yes, sorry. I was asleep at the wheel there, sorry councillor Kilgower.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, thank you. First of all, can I just say thank you to those people, those colleagues across the council chamber who've brought contributions tonight that we will donate to the food bank. We will carry on collecting, as the motion is saying, over the next few weeks, and we will make sure that that goes to the neediest people in our community. And, Lord Mayor, we will also give, because we care about people who are homeless in the city, we will also collect and give to crisis over Christmas as well. So I know that's not part of the motion, but I'll take the opportunity to remind colleagues about that. I think I'm really pleased that this is going forward as an all-party motion this evening. I think it sends really clear messages about this council. But I guess what my colleagues have said, and for the benefit of the party opposite, we need them to take that message back to their colleagues in government who are propping up the Conservatives. Their ideology is putting Lib Dem MPs in, you know, if we're fair about tonight's motion, in a difficult position. You're propping them up, doing those awful things. And actually, councillor Faulkner, I think councillor Sessinger raised the issues when she introduced the whole debate around benefits, that wasn't councillor Kilgower, that was actually started off from that side of the council chamber. The debt in this country, as we all know, and as all of you know, was caused by the banks and the problems in the States, and not by the Labour government. The Labour government did the right thing in propping up the banks so that the rest of us were protected. I think that was the right decision. Okay, we're suffering the consequences, and some people are being hit much harder than others. But I do think, as my colleagues have said, and actually, so have colleagues in the party opposite said, it's a disgraceful situation in one of the richest countries in the world that many of our families rely on food banks, and we want to do everything we can to increase the hope. One of the real problems we've got in the city is about people who rely on benefits who are in work. Many people who are on benefits are pensioners and quite rightly being supported. But those people who are in not really quality jobs and reliant on benefits are partly the people who are also reliant on food banks, because they're really struggling. Cost of living increases have been phenomenal, and I think, Lord Mayor, it's great that we're all going to vote for this, it does send a clear message to the residents across the city, but we need to remember who's responsible for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. And finally, councillor Todd.
Well, in the sure councillor Faulkner, thank you, Lord Mayor, by the way. Sure councillor Faulkner, I've not got a prepared speech, so some jottings, partly prompted by some of his comments, which I thought were fair in some respects, the point about food waste is right, it's an appalling situation globally, that we waste so much food when so many people are going hungry. I didn't agree with all the points that he made, the comparison with other countries, for example. Well, there are food banks in other countries, and some of them are long-established traditions, but it's only in the UK, under Ian Duncan Smith's sensitive guidance of the welfare system, that food banks have been raised to the status of state policy as a way of dealing with food. And that's the shift, that's the fundamental change that's taken place. That's why we've got so many food banks that are popping up around the place. They come in all shapes and sizes, don't they, food banks? So I just wanted to pick one out, in addition to the others that Karen and Jackie have mentioned, and that's the Muslim Initiative Food Bank that operates in Wingrove Ward, I think, once a month on a Sunday afternoon at the Angelou Centre. I mention them because it's another example, like the Islamic Diversity Centre, who received an award earlier this evening, of people as human beings and guided by the principles of their faith, reach out to other human beings to help them out in difficult times. And we just need to remember that, I think, about community relationships in Newcastle, that sometimes it's easy, I think, for people to run away with the idea that, the stereotypes promoted by the media. I think the Muslim Initiative deserves a special mention. As indeed does Co-op Jam. I was interested in discovering recently that in the First World War, one of the things that troops said got them through, the mud and bullets, was CWS jam. It sort of came over in, people sort of sent it over in food parcels and the rest of it. So the stagger to victory was fuelled by CWS jam for those who survived that war. And so when I put some items in the food bank donations outside tonight, I've chosen some jars of Co-op Jam, because I think if it could get the troops through the war in Europe, it could get the poor through the war against Ian Duncan Smith that is imposing on them. The very last thing I wanted to make, because councillor Sessinger mentioned that ward committees in the West End might be asked to support the West End Food Bank. I'm sure we'll all be as generous as we can, but mind you, in that part of the city, there are all sorts of social and economic problems, and so ward committee budgets are in some cases likely to be already well-spent. So it might, well, we'll see what comes in really, but people will go the extra mile to help the food banks. But why should that appeal be limited to one of the poorest parts of the city? And there are ward committees in affluent areas of the city that haven't spent money. So why can't the appeal be extended to them? So we could ask fellow citizens in the more well-off parts of Newcastle to help their colleagues in other parts? I think that's a fair proposition that perhaps our colleagues opposite might like to take away with them.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor. CWS jam, interesting conception. Councillor Kilgower, you have the right to reply. Councillor Kilgower.
Sorry, I forgot to reply. Can I thank councillor Sessinger for offering to second the motion? I'm aware she's involved in one of the food banks, and I know she has personal experience, as councillor Riley and I have of the good work that they do. Councillor Faulkner is right, as we've said, that food banks have been around for a very long time. However, it is this government's policies, like the introduction of punitive benefit sanctions, the bedroom tax, that have forced people onto the breadline in many instances. It's this government that turned down twenty-two million pounds of EU funding to help support food banks and provide food to some of the poorest people in society. We can't get away from that. It's down to the, well, a lot of it is down to this government. As councillor David Wood was right in saying that people don't want to use food banks, nobody chooses to use food banks, and I think one of the lessons, what I've learnt from going to food banks, is that it can happen to anyone, anybody can end up in this situation. There was a report published this year that was commissioned by DEFRA on food poverty, and it states that there is no evidence to support the claim that provision of food is driving demand. This is very much demand-led, and in fact, demand is outstripping provision. Again, councillor Faulkner is raising some very interesting points around food waste and around profiteering of large businesses, and I very much hope we can bring further motions to council about food poverty more generally, the wider issue, not just about the food banks. And if I can sum up, while most of us enjoy the Christmas period, it can be obviously a very difficult time of year for our residents, especially families, and food banks offer a lifeline to those in need, but as councillor Sessinger said, they are not and should not be considered part of the security net of a compassionate and fit-for-purpose welfare state system. Colleagues, please support the motion, and if you can, please support your local food bank. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are we unanimously agreed? So you don't need a vote. Item 12, notice of motion, devolution. I call on councillor Faulkner to move the motion, seconded by councillor Cot. Is that right? Yeah?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm on a roll tonight, working my way through the agenda. Lord Mayor, I drafted this fairly simple motion before the announcement last week about the additional tax-raising powers that Scotland would be given, and then, following on from that, of course, the quite reasonable lobbying from English cities and indeed counties to have commensurate powers established there as well. So that's just a timing point. The motion, as I'm sure you're all aware, is not about whether there should be a directly-elected Metro Mayor, I'll call them Metro Mayor or not, but about who decides whether there should be one. Should it be the public to decide through a referendum whether they want one? Or should it be via what seems to have happened in Manchester, some kind of dirty deal between council leaders and the government in what we used to call a smoke-filled room? And, you know, if it's right to devolve powers, and it is right, and they are being devolved, and they will continue to be devolved, I'm sure, powers and funding to go with it, then it's the right thing to do, full stop. It shouldn't be conditional on a particular form of leadership, and it certainly shouldn't be that a particular model is imposed on the electorate, whether they like it or not. And that really is what's happened in Greater Manchester, and I'm really very surprised. The council leaders there have just kind of rolled over, despite the fact that it's only, what, less than two years when the electors of Manchester voted against having a directly-elected mayor, as we did in Newcastle by almost two to one, and indeed, most cities. So it was rejected decisively, but hey, in case it's rejected again, we can't have that, let's just not bother with having a referendum and seeking some kind of electoral mandate, let's just do it for what really is a hugely, potentially a hugely significant change. Well, sadly, you know, there are precedents, and I have to admit that we're a party to one of them, and that is the police and crime commissioners, which were imposed upon us all. There wasn't a referendum about whether we wanted them or not, we got them, sadly supported by our party, and I hope very much that our manifesto for the coming elections, and yours too, will abolish them. But there's another precedent, and that precedent is in Liverpool, where Uncle Joe, knowing full well that if the job was available, he'd be the one to get it, decided he wasn't even going to bother having a referendum about whether they'd have a city mayor, he was just going to say, "We're going to have one," and then went straight to election, and guess what? Joe won. I found that absolutely outrageous, and at least I'm glad that that didn't happen here. And now, of course, the same man wants to have a Greater Merseyside super-city regional mayor without a referendum. Well, that's a surprise. And, you know, what is this obsession about elected mayors? And sadly, it kind of started under Labour, but it's linked with what's called strong leadership. And I just, I can't understand this thing about strong lea, I'm all for effective leadership, but that's not the strong leadership that means you have to have a single individual with all the powers given to them to drive through change and decisions. It seems to me that you actually draw strength in your leadership from your democratic mandate, and it's weaker if you haven't got one. And if you become a directly-elected Metro Mayor, but nobody actually asks people whether they wanted one or not, that's not a platform for strong or effective leadership. So I'll just say, I repeat, it's not about whether we should have devolution, or whether we should have a directly-elected Metro Mayor at all, it's about who decides, it's about a point of principle, it's about democracy. So please support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Cot.
I'd like to second the motion and reserve the right to speak, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Kane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. When I first heard of this policy, I thought, who does the government think they are, New Labour? Because, you know, we used to get this sort of arm-twisting all the time under the last government. You know, you won't get, you won't be allowed to upgrade social housing unless you have an Almo, you won't be allowed to build new houses unless, get funding to build new houses unless you clear streets of perfectly good houses. And, you know, this type of central government arm-twisting, no matter which colour of party is in control, it just makes a mockery of local democracy. And, you know, just maybe diluting what David said by talking about devolution a little bit, I'm absolutely all for devolution. The shadow regional assembly, which I sat on before the referendum on the North East Assembly, I thought was a perfectly good model of governance. Assembly, I thought was a perfectly good model of governance, and actually, we got a lot more done in things like the Regional Spatial Strategy with an air of consensus across three parties than we get in this chamber with two, plus the independents. So devolution has to happen. I think it's simple to do in a way that's reasonably cost-effective by using already-elected members who already are getting their alliances, so we don't have to create this extra level of bureaucrats and their fees and stuff. But it's this, trying to link that to another policy is just the complete antithesis of devolution, and it's almost, it's almost an Orwellian joke. So I'm perfectly happy to support this motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Kane. Councillor Forbes?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I may struggle a little during this speech, but if my voice goes, I'm sure other people will get the sentiment of what I'm saying. Let me start off by saying, first of all, that I don't think anybody in this chamber is particularly in favour of elected mayors. I know there was a pretty strong campaign in the city against one in Newcastle in 2012, and there are legitimate concerns about the concentration of powers in one individual, particularly if those powers are unchecked and unscrutinised, as they are in, for example, the Mayor of London's setup. Councillor Faulkner, I think, is making the most fundamental mistake in negotiation, which is to bind your own hands before you've actually started the conversation with the government. And on this, I think we have a really strong ask for devolution. I think we have a very strong set of asks which we know will make a difference. This is something that we've been working with as a city, with Newcastle and the other core cities, to achieve. We have good relationships with government in terms of the conversations that we're able to have as a city, that people take us seriously as a city, and people engage with us in terms of all sorts of ways in which we can shape the devolutionary debate and the devolutionary approach. I think it's fair to say that Newcastle in the North East is one of the leaders in pushing for constitutional and devolutionary change in England at the moment, and that has been done quite deliberately to keep doors open, not to close doors. And of course, in a devolutionary offer, there may be a whole range of different governance options on the table. I think it's pretty clear that if there were significant powers, there would need to be some kind of directly-elected relationship between the people who exercise those powers and the local population. But we haven't even got to that stage yet, we haven't even seen the colour of the government's money on this, and it's absolutely critical that what we do is keep our negotiating tactics open and see what we can achieve without binding our hands behind our backs at the first hurdle. And I would just conclude with this point, Lord Mayor, that it's absolutely crucial that we get devolution in England, and to do that, we need to work with people constructively. And councillor Faulkner, making rude comments about the leaders of the other core cities in this council chamber in a public forum, is not, in my view, the best way to influence and negotiate with people. We are far better off joining forces to campaign for devolution, keeping our options open, and negotiating with government, whichever government it happens to be, on a clear set of principles which are based in truth and on the basis of what would work for our communities. That doesn't mean that we simply go down one particular route which has been adopted in Manchester, we keep the door open, and we go for what is right for Newcastle and the North East.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I have a few points to raise on this, because there's been a lot of movement on the issue of devolution to cities and regions and to the question of devolution to England as a result of the rapidly evolving Scottish devolution debate. I want to raise a few points that have occurred to me over the last few months on this issue. The first is about the combined authority. The motion welcomes further devolution to cities and either to the local authority or via the combined authority. And I think we, I do understand and support the principle of that, but I think we do need more accountability, more transparency for the North East combined authority itself. I understand we are supposed to ask questions about any ECA matters to members of that authority in their own council chambers, and I'd like to try and do that here in this chamber. But it is harder to ask questions about, for example, things like the performance of the metro system, which is currently not as, nowhere near as it should be, and I don't think it's proving a clearer and more accountable system than we had before under the Integrated Transport Authority. And it's particularly hard for us to ask the number of questions about the range of NICA activities, given we have a cap on the number of questions that we can ask here in this chamber, so that needs to be looked at, I think. Accountability for the combined authority is something that I would hope that the combined authority's members will do something about and try and to raise the level a bit on than it has done so far. I recognise it is early days, but there's more to be done there. I then want to ask about tax-raising powers, and I have asked about tax-raising powers on the council agenda tonight, there's a written question and answer, which the leader didn't really go into much depth on. He hasn't, he doesn't appear to have actually asked for any additional tax-raising powers. He has, from his answer, seems to have moved, made some requests and moved for a fair distribution of certain funds, but that's not the same as tax-raising itself, and clearly, he has been in the media quite a great deal recently talking about tax-raising powers. So I'd like to know what assessment the council has made of what tax-raising powers would mean for Newcastle, whether indeed tax-raising would have an impact, for instance, on business rates and on business investment in this city, and whether indeed tax-lowering might be something that we might be considering in this region to actually attract more investment and more economic development into this region. My third point is about other cities, and I think it is slightly unfortunate for councillor Forbes to have cited his own credentials as a leader in this particular field, and it's very clear, given that government has successfully concluded some significant additional devolution arrangements with Manchester and Leeds City Regions, and Newcastle in the North East has been lagging behind a bit, so clearly, it's not the case that he's actually delivering on some of that rhetoric. Given that is the case, I would ask councillor Forbes, now that in amendments he wants to contribute to this debate, to perhaps think about why it is that the North East is a little bit further behind Manchester and Leeds. How come it is that those two cities have driven forward further and faster than the North East has, and what do we need to do to catch up with that? My fourth point is around David Miliband, the better of the Miliband brothers, who, when he talked about devolution in the past, talked about double devolution, and about how we achieve better devolution from, not just from central government, but from local government level down to our neighbourhoods as well. I think that's what is missing, as powers are rolled up from local authority to the combined authority, so I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Cot?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I think it's been quite an interesting debate. One of the things I note about all of this is, we have an opportunity here to make a real radical change. Radical politics is at the heart of a lot of what we in this chamber, I think on both sides actually, share. And the opportunity here is to build something new, is to enable devolution to be, devolution powers to be devolved down to the most appropriate level. And here is an opportunity to move away in England, where we have one of the most centralised states, to a much more devolved approach to government, which is much closer to people. I think people often feel very distant from the decision-making, and here is an opportunity to be, to deal with some of these issues. One of the things that I think is overlooked from the debate, however, and it kind of links in with some of these issues, is actually what people themselves, what the community, what people we represent actually think about some of these things. And coming up with solutions which don't seem to have engaged people aren't very good. I know when we, when there was the Scottish referendum and the aftermath, that one of the things that was mentioned, actually, I think, by the Labour Party and Liberal Democrats, was the idea of having a constitutional convention to actually debate the issues about future devolution in England. And I suppose there's a sort of microscopic level in relation to that, but why don't we do something like that here? Why don't we have some kind of convention in Newcastle to engage people in what they would like to see? And coming up with solutions which presuppose a particular outcome doesn't seem very helpful in that context. I think there was some really interesting discussion about the sort of powers that could actually come down to local authorities and combined authorities, with tax was raised, transport issues. I think councillor Hobson might have even raised issues to do with social care. And one of the issues, I think, is that sometimes when the power, where the decision-making is so distant, you don't necessarily get the right solution, and we have this sometimes with the local government settlement. We also have this where central government comes up with all sorts of programmes where we have to apply for money and there's a competition, well, you know, it's happened under this administration, it happened under our administration, it was ever thus. But it doesn't give you long-term certainty, and I think alongside some of these powers, and needs to be, there certainly needs to be fiscal devolution, tax-raising powers, looking at this in more detail, looking more freedom about council tax, income tax, all of those things, I think, should be thrown into the equation. But I think it's really important that we engage local people in some of these issues. And I disagree with councillor Forbes about his negotiating position, because the negotiating position could be one which is basically saying, have this or nothing, and I don't think that would necessarily be acceptable, and I'm not saying that that's his view either, but I do think that there's a danger that that could be the case. Devolution isn't good for devolution's sake, it has to be a devolution that people are happy with. And we've been in a situation before where the campaign for the Regional Assembly wasn't successful, I think that was partly because people hadn't been successfully engaged in the process. I think we need to look at this in a much more radical way and engage people more, and hopefully, we'll get a better outcome. But this could be an exciting time for us, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much.
Councillor Cot? I'll call on councillor Faulkner to reply, and I'm looking at the time for the guillotine. Councillor Faulkner?
Lord Mayor, I think we could have interesting debates, and I hope we will in the future in this chamber, on what should be devolved. I think the same about a combined authority and how it evolves and how it works and how it can be effective, I hope we can have that debate. I think we can have a debate about the form of political devolution if we do get it, if it is something that's on offer. So for example, if we are being offered a directly-elected mayor, then my view is, my own view, the party's view, is that it should be on the London model with a directly-elected regional assembly as well. However, councillor Forbes says this is playing your cards too early. Well, look, the cat's out the bag already. I mean, Greater Manchester have done it, that's the benchmark, that's the yardstick. Are we up for that, or are we not? And I think what this motion says is that we want to draw a red line to say that we're not against necessarily, let's hear the arguments about a Metro Mayor, but we're against an imposed Metro Mayor, and that's what the motion's about. So if indeed you do negotiations with your colleagues, with government, and there's something on offer that you think's worth having, and you think it's worth a Metro Mayor, fine, make the argument and put the case to the electorate, and let's see if they agree with you. But don't do a deal behind the electorate's back, that wouldn't be right. I'm sorry that you thought I was rude about Liverpool, I did think it was outrageous behaviour, but I apologise if I was rude about them. And I'll finish by praising, complimenting, and congratulating one of our own regional council leaders, and that is councillor Simon Hennig, who has made it to the Local Government Chronicle's list of the top hundred most influential people in local government, alongside Pat Ritchie, congratulations Pat, and John Shipley. I commiserate with councillor Forbes for not having made the list, all I can say is you should try a bit harder to get your name in the newspapers.
I call on councillor to vote on the motion. Ring a bell? Okay. I've lost the bell. Item 13, notice of motion, fair deal for your local campaign. I'm calling councillor Stone to move the motion, seconded by councillor Gallagher.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would imagine that most members of the council have had at least some acquaintance with public houses in this city, although I will decline to speculate on which members spend more time in them than others. Newcastle City Centre has many pubs, but very few remain in some parts of the rest of the city. We spend much time on licensing matters to make sure that pubs and bars are safe and well-managed, but not so much time considering their economic viability. My motion seeks to highlight a couple of issues that are highly relevant. Many pubs are hubs of the local community or neighbourhoods, we can all point to local examples from our wards, which in my case are the Corner House in the Lockside in Cockham Park, the Northumberland Hussars has recently reopened just over the Wall boundary and is proving very popular. Some pubs play an increasingly important role in adding to the quality of life of the city and attracting tourist visitors. Newcastle can point to a range of really good quality pubs, gastro pubs and brew pubs. The recent recognition of Newcastle as the UK's favourite city destination in the Guardian Travel section identified some particular favourites, like the Bridge Tavern, the Broadchair, Bacchus and the Cumberland Arms, all of which I'm happy to have frequented. However, the long-term trend has been downwards, pubs have suffered from the economic downturn, increased competition from supermarkets and drinking at home. Companies that own premises have taken the view they can make a greater return selling sites of development. The Egypt Cottage is one of the oldest pubs in the city with an important cultural history. Residents of Brunton Park are disgruntled about the loss of the Royal George. Other sites have been lost to student housing or supermarket conversions. Some have been left empty and unloved after pub companies have closed them and put in place restrictive covenants on their reopening as licensed premises. I want to see more done to promote the inclusion of pubs on the register of assets of community value in Newcastle. Although one-third of listed assets nationally are pubs, none so far are in Newcastle. The other main challenge faced by pubs is a question of economics. The role of the pubco's has deservedly come under the spotlight for what many would see as restrictive practice. Good, hard-working, responsible publicans have frequently been hit by restrictions forced on by the pubco's who own the premises and who impose punitive rules on their tenants. They have been challenged by campaigners and MPs, and the government has agreed to incorporate a new regulatory pub code within the Small Business Bill to ensure fair market rents. The pub code only goes so far. Backbench MPs of all parties have supported efforts to include the beer tie within new legislation. This forces tenants to buy their beer from the pub company at rates that are typically well above the market rate. This adds a significant extra cost burden to their efforts to make a living. Fifty-seven per cent of Thai publicans are struggling financially, eighty-eight per cent of publicans identify the tie as a significant factor in their difficulties. This motion therefore seeks to welcome efforts made by pubs groups, Camera, the Fair Pint Campaign and other groups to promote the fair deal for your local campaign. It commends efforts made to change the legislation to end pressure on tenants to buy through the pubco's at artificially high prices and to buy on the free market. I'm pleased that efforts have paid off, and there's a new clause that was agreed by the House of Commons on November the 18th, which government has now agreed to. This will improve the economic health of many pubs and will encourage the growing local microbrewery and craft beer sector. It will mean more pubs will stay open, and it will mean more publicans and their employees will keep their jobs. That is very good news ahead of Small Business Saturday this weekend, and I for one will drink to their health this weekend. I hope there's an exorbitant cross-party community activity will prevail in this chamber tonight as we defend the Commons. I see there's an amendment to come forward which I believe is friendly and supportive. I would particularly like to commend the efforts made by the Globe, I've been down there myself and councillor Hoodart have been involved in that group as well. So I think there is broad consensus on this one, and I think we'll be supporting the amendment when it comes forward. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Stone. Councillor Gallagher?
Can I second and reserve the right to speak, Lord Mayor?
You can indeed. I call on councillor Belgium to move an amendment, seconded by councillor Todd.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll try to be brief tonight if I can. I like any motion, the detail is so important. And the reason for the amendment tonight is twofold really. The first one, which is very important, that in the original motion, it mentions the right to buy. And I think there's been some confusion brought in here, because it's not the right to buy that we're talking about, it's actually the right to bid, the community right to bid. There's also other differences, which is between the asset community value and the community right to bid scheme, and that should be noted. There can be confusion between the two, but the first is the registration and adding to a list of community assets, and the latter, to put quite simplistically, is when a community group will have time to put together the funding necessary to bid on the open market. The motion mentions contributions that their well-run pubs and microbreweries make to the city's economy. The first is well documented, as we all know, and I'm hoping that soon we will see more microbreweries across the city, and to the great history of brewing that this city actually has, Lord Mayor. Can I also mention the success of a local cooperative, the Globe? This was the first music venue in the UK to be owned, freehold by a cooperative, and it's, it is a lasting asset for the local community. It was bought by the Jazz Co-op in April 2014 after a successful community share issue, and over 200 people have invested so far. As noted on their website, I would like to give full respect to the work of the late Keith Combray, who worked tirelessly to achieve this outcome. I know many in this chamber will actually have come across I know many in this chamber will actually have came across Keith. I believe, Lord Mayor, the amended motion will allow the council to build on the success of helping both local communities and local business. In closing, Lord Mayor, can I also just add and remind councillors to show the support for the Small Business Saturday? This is what we want to encourage everyone to shop locally, and we will use small independent services. This Saturday, Lord Mayor, please push. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. councillor Todd?
I'll just formally second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The guillotine has now fallen. I will allow one more speaker, then allow councillor Gallagher and councillor Stone to write a reply. councillor Saladis, if you wish to... If you wish to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I very much welcome this motion brought by my colleague councillor Stone and the support from the other side of the chamber. Certainly, I'd like to point out in the ward I represent, Ustburn Ward, there has been loss of pubs. For example, the, another facility called the Globe, which changed and converted into student accommodation. I mean, I, you know, the namesake of the recently opened Globe, which certainly I and I believe my colleague councillor Huddart were happy to invest in through the crowdfunding appeal that they launched. The other one is the Queen's Arms in Shieldfield again, which has closed and converted into student accommodation. There was the Social Club in Shieldfield, which was closed, and are you gathering a pattern here, Lord Mayor? Converted into student accommodation and others. I would point out the Queen's Arms in particular, which was on the local list, on the planning department's local list, and we ensured that it got onto that list, but I'm afraid that didn't save it, which was a bit regrettable, and, you know, I certainly hope that the new legislation that's been brought forward by the government will have greater teeth in that. Certainly appears that it will, and I would commend this motion as a way of helping to preserve these important community assets. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Saladis. councillor Gallagher?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I hesitate to start my speech by saying that my mum spent most of her life behind bars, I should clarify that. She left school at fifteen and became a pub cleaner, and then when she was old enough, she became a barmaid. Sadly, just to reiterate the points made tonight, most of the bars she worked in then have now gone, the likes of the Corporation and the Stack and the Hobby and what have you. And she then became a pub manager, and she managed a few pubs, and some of those have gone now. And what I'd like to talk about really is the hard work put in by the staff who work in pubs, sometimes we take them for granted, I think, and I could see the hard work put in by my mum over the years. I mean, she always had to work really odd hours, it was my dad who always would be the Sunday dinner and the Christmas dinner and things like that, and sort of family holidays were always disjointed, shall we say. And when my mum became a pub tenant, I could see, you know, the stress that brought and the, you know, the constant worry and the debt, because once you're in charge of a pub, well then it's up to you. If a member of staff doesn't turn up, you know, you have to fill in for them, and you have to be there, and you have to provide order. I remember one particular time when one of the, one of the local rogues came in the pub and he actually pulled a knife on another customer. And my mum, well, she wasn't a tall lady, and she was as round as she was tall, and I think it runs in the family, and she actually reached over the counter and pulled this rogue up by his shirt. She told him he was barred, she threw him down on the ground. When he was on the ground, she suggested to him that he should go forth and multiply, and off he went. And then she just looked around the pub and she just said, men, men, I'm more of a man than any of you lot, you know. So it shows you, I did have a very strong female role model when I was growing up. I have to tell you, my mum was also a lifelong socialist. I realise that's not philosophy we hear much in the chamber these days, but there was once where he actually brought a Liberal MP to the pub, and she gave him his dinner, well, you may call lunch, what I call dinner, and, sorry, okay. And anyway, she gave him his dinner, and then afterwards he thanked her and he said, you've got a good lad there, Riley, and you brought him up in the good Liberal tradition. And she said, you know, I'm Labour, me, you know, so we nearly got away with it. But the reason I mention that part of it is because, just to bring in another part of what pubs can do, and that's like some kind of local cohesiveness, because every Boxing Day, my mum used to run a special Christmas party for all the pensioners. And one day, someone I'm sure will be familiar to most of you in here, councillor Tommy Moore came along personally to thank my mum for all the work she'd done for the people of Bakers, for the pensioners of Baker, and I have the utmost respect for councillor Moore for doing that. He came along on Boxing Day, you know, and he presented my mum with, it was just a little plate with the coat of arms of the city on and all that, you know, but it was, you know, it was something that she treasured, it was really good. So I just wanted to make those points about the hard work that people put in, and how pubs, when we lose pubs, we sometimes do lose some of the social cohesiveness. I realise you all want to get away, it's the first time I've ever had a red light all the time, I was sporting, yeah, last orders. It's important, it's important we try and keep our pubs, otherwise they may get turned into McDonald's restaurants.
Thank you councillor. I think that was one of the most interesting stories I've heard all night, so I'd like to mention it. councillor Stone to write a reply.
Thank you. I think we've had a reasonable debate, and I think we are a broad degree of cross-party consensus on this, so as I noted, we will accept the amendments as friendly and...
Right, you all agreed? Well, it's just left to me to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and happy and prosperous New Year. Thank you.